I'm going to call to order this meeting. And can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I want to thank you for all coming tonight and as I always like to have transparency. We were in an executive board meeting from five o'clock to this time. It is budget time and contract time, so we have a lot of those things going on and it sometimes takes longer than we anticipated. But not without a beat, we're going to move to comments and statements from the public. Do we have any? Noticing that people are staying in from inclement weather. Actually, it could be bright and sunny and they still don't come to see us. I don't know why. But in any event, we're going to move on to our informational agenda. I am going to ask for a motion to table to the next school committee meeting, the presentation by our student representatives because of the weather. Mr. Auburn did not feel it was not the proper move to have their parents driving them to the meeting this evening, which I certainly agreed with him. So do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Having none opposed. Moving on to Mr. Auburn, your report.
Sure, it's going to be relatively quick. I apologize, I would have handed this to you, but this just came over the email yes, this afternoon, based on a meeting of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents with the Joint Committee on Ways and Means. And it involves the budgeting for the 24 school year. Couple of the highlights include they're requesting an increased minimum student aid from $30 per student in the governor's budget to $100 per student. But I think the most important aspect of this has to do with special education. As we know, special education has become a real problem, not just for our district, but districts around the Commonwealth. So what they're looking for first of all is to fully fund circuit breakup. As you may or may not know, when we go over our allocation, the state will kick in 75% over our allocation in the next year. So we still have to incur that 25% over, plus we have to wait until the next year that comes. They are looking at asking the governor to fund circuit breakup from 75% to 90%, which would be a huge help, especially with a lot of district placements. Additionally, they're also looking at increasing the special education transportation reimbursement from 75 to 90%. So and you know, finally, I think it's important to know that we are not the only community right now that is struggling under the Student Opportunity Act. It looks like 25% of districts get most of the money from that act. So I'm hoping that people will contact our certainly Senator Rogers, who was the chair of Ways and Means and Representative Schmidt, with the hope that they will fully support this because as you know, our special education budget has become really problematic over the past. And Madam Chair, that's all I have unless anybody has a question.
Does anybody have a question of Mr. Auburn?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to relay that that is a proposal. The governor's actual proposal is not to give. The K through eight is pretty thrifty on the governor's side, just more if you're listening to my meeting tonight. It's very, very light. It is very heavy on the advanced education side, which I'm sure you're happy with, but the K through eight side is really on the short end of the stick.
Yeah, K through 12 was extremely and I actually, I sent a letter or an email, you know, to Commissioner Riley expressing our disappointment at that, so.
And I think maybe a letter to our representatives would be appropriate because we need to express that, you know, we are not being funded in the manner that it's necessary, especially with the state having so much additional funds. All right, moving on to the bill warrant. The 224-23 bill warrant is for $407,544.54 and 310-23, $220,424.17. I know that Mr. Viveras is always good going line by line. And if you had any questions, I'm sure that you had the opportunity to ask them. Anybody else? Is this the Belize look? Is that what this is?
No, this is, I got a meeting at five o'clock.
Okay, just checking. We're going to have the school attending children report by Ms. Reposa.
Yes, so everyone has it in their packet. I won't go line by line. I do have a comparison that I'm not sure was handed email to everyone and if not.
I got it.
Okay. I won't review it. I mean, our numbers have started to increase finally since 2020. So we are finally starting to see an uptick, which obviously has been a result of our increase in chapter 70 this year. So again, you know, we are working diligently with our registrar person is constantly out there and keeping her ears and eyes open on everything that's happening and trying to get as many people to come back to Westport. So I think with our website and, you know, many of the other things that are happening in the district, that it's really starting to turn around and students are wanting to come back and take advantage of the offerings that we do now have here. And we're hoping to continue with the increase of enrollment, that students going to other schools will decrease and more will start to come to us. But if anybody has questions on the breakdown of this, I'm more than happy to send information out to everyone. I just wanted to just get a general.
I'd like to say something though. Those videos are fantastic.
Thank you.
The website looks amazing. I know you do some stuff for it, but it does look amazing. It's good to see. It puts a lot of our information out there. It's going up on Facebook, social media, Twitter. It's, there's a good notice that Mr. Pachico's, the determination of signups was out there for people to know. That was all over social media and I'm sure we'll have people saying they didn't see it, but we're doing as best as we can.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Also, I know that the committee is well aware that Bishop Connolly is closed. We sent correspondence to the students of Bishop Connolly with the information that we offer school choice at grade nine. And as the committee is going to have to make a decision about school choice for the 24 year in the next couple of meetings, that might be something that we.
I think that we should put that on the next agenda, Mr. Auburn. And I think that we have to reach out to them and I know as well as there is an effort going on for us to reach out to the parochial schools, showing them that we're having the program that allows the eighth graders to go in and advance in three years as opposed to four, which I think is very, very important. And you know, obviously, we'd be more than happy to absorb a lot of fine students from Connolly to come here to Westport. And I think they would find a similar facility with an upgraded new building and some fantastic computer and digital and technology to work with. So we're hoping to show them what we have to offer and that they'll come here as well. The next piece of this is the acknowledgement of $1,656.80 for the school breakfast participation improvement grant from Project Bread. This is not something that we need to have a vote on. It's just informational.
It's just informational that we received a grant for to help increase our breakfast participation in the district. And hopefully, there's a couple of other grants coming our way to help with participation over the summer in our summer eats program, so.
Well, again, thank you so much for doing what you do for our district when it comes to the world of food.
We're trying.
You do a fantastic job. You really, really do.
We're trying to get there.
We do see it and acknowledge it. Thank you. An update from Mr. Pachico on our lacrosse field and skills clinic. Lacrosse, for some of you that may not recall, is the first year here in Westport. And Mr. Pachico will let us know that he did invite Connolly over to co-op with us. So Mr. Pachico.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Yes, lacrosse off and running in terms of it was included in the registration for spring sports, like the rest of our sports. We did execute the co-op and it was approved by the district, the MIA district, as well as our own. So it has been approved, obviously with the notice last week of Connolly closing in the near future. As of right now, we have zero Connolly kids registered, but we got 16 of our own here from Westport, which is certainly a good starting number. So I'm happy with that. I'm not sure what is happening or going to happen with Connolly. Similar to the Connolly situation a few years ago when Coyle and Cassidy closed in Taunton, there was a mass exodus when they made the announcement. And some of their sports, spring sports, ended up in jeopardy at Coyle at that time too. So we haven't heard any correspondence from Connolly. I haven't heard from them in terms of their other spring sports or if they are going to send us any lacrosse athletes. But I'll work that out with their athletic director.
Yeah, can you reach out with them specifically? Because I know that there were five returning students that were juniors or seniors.
Correct.
Especially the seniors that are affected by the juniors not having something. So if you could reach out specifically.
I definitely will. The link to family ID was sent to their athletic director when it was opened here at Westport too. So he's had it for a while. I just don't know what's happening with those student athletes from Connolly and if they're already looking for a new school or whatever maybe going on.
I know the kids have been doing the captains practices, whatever. I thought one day there was a kid, one student from Connolly that had showed up.
I'll double check. He hasn't registered? I can tell you that.
Registered. I want, they need to make sure that they register. I think that that's, because they've never had to register on our site before.
Correct. And I expressed that.
I don't know if Connolly does family. They probably don't have that.
They do not. I think they had in the past, but then they weren't again.
Because I know for a fact that five of those kids that played have been in contact with our athletes that played with them last year and have expressed that they are playing. So let's make sure there's no confusion for them.
Will do.
Jade, do they have any sports, spring sports that we collaborate on? I know that's not the right word. With them, co-op, thank you, that we co-op with them?
Track and field. Our track and field athletes can run for Bishop Connolly. Their two coaches were here last week for a meeting. We called any interested students down to the career center. Two of them showed up and that was before the announcement came out on Friday. I'll check in with those two kids. They didn't register even after the meeting had happened and they expressed interest. But I'll check with the two of them to see, are they interested? Are they not interested now due to the closing of the school or, you know, what have you?
And I know this isn't for this meeting, but I wonder if we've thought about doing a track and field, especially since we have, I mean, we're Westport. I mean, I would imagine this is a really.
Winter track and field? Are you stopping?
I don't know.
There's two seasons. There's a winter and a spring. And then there's cross country in the fall, which I would think.
I think Jade, like, we're going to have to think about more offerings, especially with Connolly closing as well. To make, I know that they have a cross country team at Connolly. And whatever co-ops that we can become involved in, because through the efforts of Mrs. Reposa and Mr. Auburn, we were able through the ARP money to get two more of those travel buses. And I know that that's been a big problem with our co-ops is getting our students to the school for practice. If we were to co-op with the charter school or staying or wherever it is, it's hard for parents at two o'clock in the afternoon to get their kids over to those fields. So now we have a better ability. So obviously, it's important to try to increase what we offer, so. Now, the field, I think, was next on your list?
Yep. The field, they will play lacrosse on the former field hockey field at the old school. It was marked on Sunday by the contractor. So he came down on Sunday, already marked it, laid it out. It looks great. I walked it the other day and emailed Kim Willett to let her know that it was all set. I know one of the goals was out there when I was there the other day and I notified her in the same email that the other one can now go out there and they can go in place now that the field has been marked. So field is all set. That's checked.
So it is a legally sized field?
Yes.
Because we were concerned about the size. And I know there has to be some fencing. And I know the school, the school building authority was going to be asked regarding that fencing, if we could do something with that because we're going to need it. And basically, the insufficiency of the size of the fields here, our use for them, as Jade said, with the spring sports, with baseball and softball, the fencing is going to be something that we're going to need moving forward. So I do think that possibly you being the chair, maybe that could come under something for their consideration is to pay for the fencing, which we could move wherever we need be, but at least we can do that. So I'm hoping that Mr. Viveras can look into that.
No, that would certainly be a legitimate expense.
Yes, I know Kim got several quotes from different companies on the fencing and she was just going back and forth with them to see, you know, which one could install and get it done, I think, faster so that we were all set.
Okay. Is there any, so and then I think the last was the skills clinic piece?
Yes. In terms of skills clinic, it was tough to get up and running officially for several reasons. I know we communicated through email. Mr. Shivers, becoming the head coach, is obviously heavily involved in the high school drama productions, being the advisor for that and having the shows this weekend. Besides that, I was happy, he did communicate with his captains from last year. So they did get some workouts up and running and they've been doing that. I think from what I heard, they have another scheduled tomorrow if the field will allow for it. But in terms of an official clinic, we weren't able to get it running. But I was happy to hear that the kids have been working together to get a head start in the season.
And I do understand that there's some girls that are trying out for the team. We don't have a female lacrosse team, but if we do have a bigger enough interest in that moving forward, then maybe we can provide them some opportunities if they so seek it. But it was great to see that they were out to the team. And it was also really great to see how accepted they were by our male athletes. And I was really proud to see that they were really good with it. So that was great. Anybody else have any other questions of Mr. Pachico on this? No? No more questions? Do you have anything else?
Nope. As you alluded to earlier, registration closed last night at midnight. Numbers are good. Obviously, lacrosse number was really good. Same thing for baseball, softball. We'll easily be able to have the three teams, varsity JV middle school for baseball and softball. Both tennis teams will be fine in terms of their numbers for boys and girls tennis. And then I'll just double check on the lacrosse players.
They would have no objection to, you know, giving additional time for Connolly since they don't have the same signature for them. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pachico.
The superintendent evaluation process. So we have a little catching up to do on that process. And there's a lot to evaluate here, Tom, just saying. Sometimes your glasses don't match your shirt, no socks. There's a lot of issues we're going to have to address. But the committee will be doing a workshop with respect to compiling that evaluation. You'll have your own piece of it that you need to do. You know what you have to do. You've been doing this long enough. But I, we'll talk about what we need to do, but in the next work session, I think we can get that done and complete it. I think collaboratively, it's easier to all sit in a room than having us email back and forth and then having somebody compile the information. So everybody's agreed, no problem with that. Okay, so we will set up a work session for that. It might have already been set up, but we'll do that. Okay, moving on to the action agenda. Review and act on the minutes of Thursday, February 2nd, 2023. And Thursday, February 16th, 2023 budget work session. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any opposed? Having none? All in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Review and act on insurance for computers. I think Mrs. Pachico is going to be thrilled to have this finally taken care of. This was her little baby of seeing all the things that happened. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Cabral, sorry. Would want to deal with this piece of it. So we're given three options and I believe, Mr. Thomas, you are here to present those three options. And we are here on an action agenda to pick one. So let's get to it. We want to hear about one, two, and three and your recommendation. Go.
No pressure, Mr. Thomas.
Let me dig out my notes.
Would you like to borrow my paper?
Yes, thank you.
Looking at one, two, and three.
See this.
I do want to point out that Mr. Pachico has very nice shoes tonight.
Okay, well, there we go, considering you're the shoe person.
So we do have three options and they all have different varying levels of coverage. You have the cheapest option, which would be $15 per student, per device. Accidental damage, cracked screens, liquid spills, liquid submersion, fire and flood damage, vandalism, natural disasters, power surge due to lightning. So that's the cheapest. That's also their baseline. You can't get anything cheaper than that. Quite frankly, that covers 90% from my opinion of most damages, generically speaking. The second item, which is $23, adds theft, burglary, and robbery. Nothing wrong with that. It does happen, but it happened infrequently, even in Killingley. I think I can count maybe two or three times that it happened in the six years that I was there. That doesn't dismiss the fact that it may have occurred more often, but it is an option. And then the third, which is the most expensive, $31 per person, covers mechanical failure, manufacturer defect. So two years from now, when the manufacturer's warranty runs out, it basically extends that warranty.
Tony, right now, what's the current shelf life of our units?
So rule of thumb is that a Chromebook really lasts, on average, three years. We're stretching it to four. We have the capability. We have the staff. And I think the students have been good enough in terms of their usage where we can extend it to four years. So we have a good grasp of that piece, in my opinion.
Can, so two questions. One, are you able to, do we have to pick one or can we have all three of an option and tell the student they can choose whichever one they want, you know, the 15, 23, or 31? So that's the first question. And then the second question is, or maybe just a statement. I would be fine with any of these as long as we have something for a student who can't afford it. And there's some sort of way of identifying if someone has the inability to pay.
So there's actually two parts to that question or two responses to that question. Response number one is it depends on who's going to be managing the process, whether it's going to be the tech department or the parent. So if I give it to the parent and say, this is, you can apply for this. The onus is on you to actually send the device in. It really doesn't take any of my effort really whatsoever. I make the connection and then they create that connection with the company itself. If we manage it, it's a little bit more of an oversight. When I was in Killingley, we had 1,000 iPads. And I'm not saying we have to duplicate that here, but I, the amount of time that we had to spend to collect funding, I had to bring one secretary in per building for half a day every day. They had to have boxes upon boxes to collect the broken devices and send them back. And then we managed that. It was a single person who managed it within the tech department and three secretaries who managed the collection of funds and the distribution of funds into an account.
So with this, are you not?
So my point is that if we do it, it's going to be a lot more overhead on my end to manage it. If we offer it up to the parents for them to manage, it doesn't cost me, no pun intended, the effort on my side doesn't exist anymore. I just merely say, this is where you can go and you can make the relationship with the company for the repairs.
Yeah, that was, that really, so thank you for that. My question was, can we, for the options for cost? So I, my assumption is that we would manage it. I don't, I'm not in, it's not my, I'm not in, I'm not interested in having our, putting something additional on our parents. So if we did insure, if we did this insurance, are we able to have our parents decide what option they want? Either they want to pay $31, $15, or $23? So what I would envision is you'd give this to a parent, say, choose one. If I'm a parent and it's vandalism, it's covered on all of them. The student brings it to you, you do what you need to do, and then they get their computer back. If they chose the $15 one and, I don't know, theft isn't on there and their computer's stolen, well then they're out of luck because they chose the $15 one. But that's what they chose.
Right.
So that's my question. Do we have to actually pick or can we just give them this you pick option?
That's a very good question. We did not do an à la carte style where I came from. I can't say that we couldn't do it though. I could certainly speak to the company and say, can you offer these three at any one time to any one parent as an option versus having them to be sort of handcuffed into one only, sort of a one size fits all. It's a worthy option.
No, thank you very much.
Tony?
Tony, on this presentation, you have totals here. Was the idea that the district would be paying?
So the total just represents how much it would cost if all the devices were covered.
That means if we.
So it was just a snapshot of what it would look like if we had to pay it ourselves and then we handed those things out to.
Is it a recommendation that the district pay for this insurance? Or are we having the parents pay? Or are we asking the parents to pay?
That's our decision. That's not his. I mean, I'd love the fact that you're up there.
But that's two different things. Having the parent, you know, sign up for a specific warranty program, that's, and having them pay it and, you know, that's one thing.
Yep.
If we just say, we're going to go ahead and buy it for every, you know, item across the board, it's done.
Correct.
There's no more managing. It's all done.
I just need to clarify because of what you said to Melissa. So whether or not we pay or the parent pays, we're managing it though. Like if a student, no, so if we have the parent, but if we have the parent pay, they would pay it to the company and then they would send in the computer? But if we pay, if we don't make the parent pay, then they, we would pay and they would bring it to us and we would fix it?
And then you'd have to hire people to take care of that.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
No, you can do an alternative. There's no.
There's no set thing. Okay.
We can do, my summary of this, not that you're doing, not doing a fabulous job. My summary of this is I can't imagine that this number, if we're going to contract with a company to do these items, we're going to have to pay a lump sum upfront. And then it's up to us to chase our students for the money. So this isn't going to be, we got $31 from Little Johnny's family, but Suzie's family did not pay the $31. Where's your $31? There was a movie with a little paper boy going, can I have my $2? I can't remember the name of the movie. But anyways, but that ends up being our thing, but the fact of the matter is, is that we have to pay it. It's going to have to be paid out of Esser funds because we have no other sources of funds to do it. And hopefully that we come up with a better process moving forward because Esser's going to run out in order to pay this lump sum. So I think that it's not, it can't, it's got, and I think that we, it's not realistic to think that we'll have all of that money in order to pay for that contract at that time, which I think is what you were alluding to. Gloria?
What, I think we've talked, when I was talking with Carrie on this, when she was here and stuff, a student, this is paid when the student picks up their iPad or their Chromebook. So you'll be getting the money as they're getting their Chromebooks.
So their Chromebooks get handed in at the end of the year, correct?
We did last year. And when I instituted the iPad program, we did the same thing. We collected all devices.
So even if the district had to enter into the contract and prepay the money, we could reimburse our Esser money and not have to worry about a line item operational number, correct, Michelle?
Right. Well, we could set up a revolving account too.
Revolving account for that. And so when they got their computer, they would have to sign the insurance contract and pay the money in order to get their Chromebook.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair, Michelle has, Ms. Reposa has a question.
I'm seeing you. Go ahead.
Is this a one year? Is this just the?
This is annual. This would be the price annually.
And if I may, just, please bear in mind, just to provide some context that, you know, originally with the one-to-one policy, the idea was one student, one computer, and we were having them take them home. And we solve all kinds of problems with that along with the whole issue of, you know, the overuse of electronics and social media. And so, you know, as we put together our next strategic and district plan, which is going to be coming up over the next couple of months and with your approval, because obviously you have to prove that, we're getting away, especially with the young ones, from actually bringing them home. We're having the computers in the computer cots but remaining in school. We've done that now, I believe, with the elementary school and we've done that with the primary school. I've spoken to Principal Charette and she's absolutely fine with that with even the middle school.
Where's our damage coming from? Is it coming from the younger kids or the older kids?
Older kids?
Middle kids?
Middle school? Middle school.
Can you just stand up for a second? Because you know, because you guys are all involved in this, so. So it's the five through eight that we're having the most problems with? Right. So as for the elementary school, is that a school that you're recommending that they turn them in at the end of the day, the one through four?
No, first of all, yeah, I, they remain in the classroom. So that car actually.
So we don't necessarily probably need the, can we do different options depending? Like can we do, if, so I would think if we have kids handing in the Chromebook at the end of the day and they're not going home, then we possibly could do a different insurance policy for those kiddos and parents for them to sign. And that'd be the contract for the Wes. I don't think we're even giving them to the Mac at this point. And so then we have two sides of this building and we can say, we're doing this program and then they have to sign up for it in that program because we're. and then they have to sign up for it in that program because we're letting them take the devices home. So that, that has an impact, right?
They think to have some ownership in it?
Yeah, they, they need to have accountability.
No, no, I don't, I don't think, so we got, there's too many, there's a lot of different fingers and branches to this. I'm hearing from the, the people that are fixing the stuff that are here is that the elementary school kids, they're not finding a lot of breakage and damage and that they keep their, their device at the school, they're collected there. So would it be the option, if it was you gentlemen or the elementary, for the one through four group that keep the devices at the school? Is that the fifteen dollar plan or is that the twenty-three dollar plan? Which one is recommended?
I think the fifteen dollar plan would more than cover it.
Okay, so then you say that that would be a fifteen dollar plan? When they come in, they get a form in the school, they have tons of forms, everything's on email. They'll have to file the check in order to get it. They also have an option to look for a free item if they come in. We can do with the form, just like we do the lunch form. If they need to have a break, we can, we can certainly coordinate that. That wouldn't be a problem, that would take care of that. And then middle school and high school, from what I'm hearing, they take them home. So what would be your recommendation on the option? I know what mine would be, but you guys?
Again, mostly we're seeing cracked screens. I would say ninety percent or more would be cracked screens. Which still puts us in the.
So we're talking thirty-one. Talking the thirty-one number. Because cracked screens doesn't appear on option two.
No, it does.
Yeah, it does.
It does, yeah.
Cracked screen does, okay. So what does, so I guess, so under the option two, which is the twenty-three dollar option, what is the, what are the, what is the difference between two and one?
Mechanical failure and defects.
Right. So mechanical failure, defects, manufacturers, issues.
Okay, but these Chromebooks are only meant to have, what kind of life?
Four years, you said.
Maximum of four years, so.
So that's kinda like when I go to Best Buy and I buy something and I say, I'd rather not pay your policy, I'd rather just buy a new one? Isn't that kinda where we're at?
Yes, very similar.
So would it be then the recommendation that, do you follow, do you think the same thing? That perhaps the second option of the twenty-three dollars would be feasible? And it's not something that we can't revisit, like if it becomes a problem, then we revisit it. But I, I, I think, so how it rolls out, we're not gonna do that tonight on how it rolls out. With the exception of this, I, I think kids have ownership, they should pay. Just like I believe parents have a right to the, to the information and to have, you know, to have import on how their children are educated. And I think this committee has said that time and time again, that, you know, the parents have a right to have a say, but the kids also have an obligation for ownership for devices. So it's a two-way street. You, you get it both ways. And as far as I'm concerned, I think if it's done properly, Mr. Toma, with, you know, how these devices are put in, I wouldn't wanna put another burden on a parent to send a device in the mail, in a box, go to UPS and deliver it. I, I just don't feel right about putting that burden on a parent or perhaps having that child pay the penalty of the price for the parent having to put it in the box and go to UPS. So I, I, I'd like to see how it kinda rolls out and if it becomes a burden to the tech department. Like, this is ridiculous, we're getting a hundred machines, we're using all the staff to do this, this, and this. I need, when you come to me and say, I need a new person, I'm gonna say, no. They're all gonna say, no. But it, I think we need to see how that feels, right? To, to, to do, so for me, and, and, and I think that the committee, and we don't have it on the action agenda, but my thought would be is that we, the school process, the return of these items for a defect.
If we're handing it out, I think we should be processing it, absolutely.
Yeah, I just, so.
Sometimes I don't know what that means.
Just raising my hand, just, you know, I have a question. You, you touched on it. So we don't wanna do this and then, like you said, we have to hire somebody to manage our warranty. You know, we don't, we don't want that. And so, Tony, so just follow me. Johnny cracks his screen. Doesn't matter how it happens.
Yep.
He, he brings it to the tech department.
Correct.
And then Johnny, does your mother have insurance? Yes, okay, bring it home? Take, is, what do we do?
No, so if you're saying they're bringing it to us and we're the ones who are managing that program.
Insurance.
We check, yes.
You check, he has insurance.
Correct.
And then you send it off.
We have the boxes, we send it off. It's prepaid, prepackaged.
So the only thing we have to do at that point is decide whether or not that's, that child has or has not.
That is correct.
Doesn't have insurance. So if they have insurance, we know.
That's after the fact, that's correct.
So we know what to do if they have it, what if they don't have insurance?
They're supposed to all have it, they're all supposed to have it when they sign it out.
So they're all gonna be mandated to have the insurance.
Yep.
This is where we're, you know, where we're gonna run into the weeds. And we can ask other districts, but I wanna bring in my iPad. Why can't I bring in that? Why do I have to do that? I have my own device.
Because we don't have control over their device.
Because we don't have control with the content of your device and what you're doing on that iPad. So that, so we all understand.
We also don't want that liability should something happen in the school, right?
So we have to say that we are mandating insurance for our Chromebooks and I think that's being responsible. That we want the tech department to do it. That as far as, from what I'm understanding tonight, can I have a, I'll make the motion because of.
I just got one question on this.
I'll make the motion to go with option two for our. Five through twelve, why is he's?
Can I, can, no, can I say that before we make an option, say something?
I'm just gonna make the motion, okay? I'm, I'm making a motion to approve option two for our elementary school students and option three for our middle school and high school students for insurance for Chromebooks.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I just got a question, yes. Mechanical failure, that's the keyboard. You don't have that on option three, right? That's the, another issue you have a major amount of problems with is keyboards, right? So that would be considered mechanical failure?
Correct.
So when they're taking the keys off and playing and, and working or playing games on their keyboard, that is not covered on option three and that's, comes in under as, just as a lot as broken screens.
Well, I don't know that because I'm not hearing, are you saying that?
John said a lot of, lot of keyboard.
The majority is broken screens, whether they've dropped or they're in their backpacks and another kid smacks them or they pull their backpack, whatever way that it's done, knocked off the desk. The majority is screens. But we do have a bunch of also keyboards, so what do you do for the keyboards? So if you go, if you're gonna take one of these different policies that doesn't cover that part of it, then what are we gonna do for the broken keyboards? Or the one that a kid takes and puts on his head and goes snap?
Is there, is there a, a school or the age group that does, has mostly the keyboards?
Middle school.
Middle school.
So does liquid spills not cover keyboards?
That's also another thing.
Well, that's under option three. So I would imagine keyboards would mess up more with liquid spills and wouldn't that be covered under option three?
But not the, not the taking apart of keys, not the breaking on a head, not the other damaging.
So from our, our tech individuals, I think, I thought that we had asked about what, what we, what the recommendations would be. I mean, what is your recommendation for us to be moving forward with this? Is it, is it option three, is it option one? Are you seeing so many keyboards where that's something that we're unable to fix in-house? Because I would imagine if it's something that, that isn't covered, like the letter S and you're able to fix the letter S, you would just fix it. I would imagine we would still do that, no?
So it depends on parts. From my perspective, if the majority are screens, then we go with the cheapest one that allows us to repair the screens. If the breakage of keys, keyboards, whatever, is thirty percent, even though that's a minority of it, that's still a large number. So we should consider anything that covers insurance with covering the keyboards, manufacturers defects slash mechanical. So that only leaves options one and three.
So what is the percentage for keyboards? You're saying that it's thirty percent or we don't know? How long is the turnaround time when you send something out? You don't know yet, right?
Two weeks.
In the meantime, we give them a loaner?
Correct.
So can we find out what the percentage of?
Yeah, I could, yep, I could get that data.
And do we think that maybe there wouldn't be as many kids breaking their keyboards over the head once they pay for the insurance?
And, and now that they're still. I'm just gonna, you know what, this is on the action, huh?
Huh? Or they're gonna continue.
Gloria, would you like to do a motion amend to, to the thirty-one dollar one?
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to the option one for the five, grades five through twelve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to, any, you're okay with that? I understand, I think, I think after, I, I think after we had more clarity, I, I agree. So I think we're all set. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None, having none opposed. Sharon, when you don't remember what we did, just let me know.
Yes, certainly.
I'm, I'm not sure if you thought about this, and maybe this is a crazy thought, but the high school students are doing internships. And once this whole thing starts going, especially once you get a process, it might be helpful to get an, an intern to help with that process.
I believe we have three already.
Well, maybe we need four.
Just for this?
That, that would be great. We've been offered more than, than three before. It was just a matter of management and.
Right, well, it's not easy to do it, I, I understand that.
If, if I also may say, the middle school has discussed keeping all of their devices within the schools and not allowing those students to take them home. So if that does come about for the next year, this could very well change a little bit as well in the positive side.
And if I could suggest maybe even, I'm sorry, revisiting it? Like if we see, once you start to do all these, you'll probably get more data. And if you see that a hundred percent were all keyboards, well, we can reduce that price for our parents and let's, let's do that.
Or, or quite frankly, we could also ask them to mix and match. We could say, take this, please, out of there and add it to the fifteen dollars. Could it be seventeen dollars? Or could it be something where it's not mixed with a thirty-one dollar? There, there's, I think there's reason where I could bargain with them as well, the, the company.
Okay, but we just made a motion to approve this or that and now you're gonna go bargain?
Well, if it comes back with a better deal, that's it.
Hasn't happened yet, but I mean.
Okay, well, you got permission to do the insurance. You understand the intent of the committee is that we know where the damage is coming from. That's where we want them protected.
And if you can negotiate a better price then.
And if you can do it, have at it. Did you have something to say, Sharon?
The only question, the only thing I was gonna say is if they, if they institute that policy where they're not gonna take them home, the keyboard issue will go down, definitely. Because what they're doing is if.
At home?
At home.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, no.
Oh, and they just wear them out, basically.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I get you.
Principal Charette is going to make a proposal to have the middle school students, similar to the elementary and primary, keep the Chromebooks here in, in-house.
And that should be it, but they're also breaking them during the school. I, I think it's reasonable, it's not much, we're talking about literally eighty cents a day over three hundred and sixty-five, eighty-five days. It's five dollars and sixty-five cents. They spend more that on that, on a Gatorade. So let's just move forward with this. You have a vote, you have our support. If there are changes, if something's not working, you've gotta come to us. We're not in the district. If you don't tell us, we don't know what's going on and we can't help you out. So thank you so much for both of your input. We appreciate it. And yes, Gloria Cabral, it was your idea and initiative to get this forward, so I'm glad that we've got this started. Having topics that the chair couldn't reasonably anticipate would be the snow and the mink wintery mix actually happening when they predicted it. So I couldn't anticipate that. So with that, can we have a motion to adjourn? Yet, oh, here she goes. Correspondence, I have none, no, no correspondence and notices. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Having none opposed, that carries, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.